If you're a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel Eight and on our city's website. The chat function is disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and INRIT director will be the co-host. For tonight's meeting, council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. This time I will call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call roll.
Mayor Hughesman?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank. Councilmember Madera.
Present.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Present.
Councilmember Hurst.
Present.
Councilmember Grimes.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mayor Yevakorm.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to excuse the member not present. Sorry about that. I had a computer glitch that froze. Uh, Councilwoman Grimes?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to excuse uh those councilmembers not present.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
I second the motion.
You have a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Frank. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember uh Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank. Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Uh yeah, eight to zero.
Thank you. Um. We have uh three presentations slated slated for this evening. Because this is a special council meeting, no citizen communication is on the agenda. Uh we'll start with the first presentation as an open gov demo. Will Cheryl Carstens, Finance Director, please make the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I am going to go over the Open Gov software that we have available for not only your use, but members of the community can view that system. I will be sharing my screen. I do not have video capability tonight, but felt it more important for you to see the screen than see me. So I will open the website. In the packet and previously in July, you were notified of the Open Gov system and given a link to that system. You can get there by that link, or if you go to the C3Gov website, you can simply type in the search budget and it will take you to the main budget page. Once you click on that, you can get into all of our budget and financial reports. Or Open Gov is the first item that you see that shows up. Can everybody see my screen?
Not yet, Cheryl. No, we cannot.
Okay.
There we go. Now we can.
Okay, great. So if you click on the budget and financial reports, as I mentioned, the Open Gov portal is the first thing that you can click on. What I'd like to let you know is that when we implemented this system back in September of 2019, we placed items on the portal for viewing based on some of the feedback we were seeing at the time. We understand that those requests may change over time. Finance does have the ability to add new reports or remove things from the system. In addition, I wanted to make sure you know that numbers can change daily. This is tied directly to our general ledger, so as we are posting transactions, the data is um refreshed once a day. So if you look at something today, go in tomorrow, you may see a different number. That is because we are posting transactions every single day. So on the right side, or I'm sorry, left side of your panel, you will see there's an item that references general fund expense actuals versus budget and annual. Here are the two categories where we have reports. So just some features that I want to show you. This particular view that we're at right now, you can see it is showing you items from February to June and then 2020 amended budget. Over on the right side of your screen, if you don't like, you can hover over the the transactions and it will show you dollars and percentages. If you prefer not to look at the graph, you can scroll to the bottom and you can see the actual numbers. Anything that shows an arrow, you can click on and that will continue to expand down to the next level. If you want to see, for example, whoops, a different type of chart, you can simply pick the various offerings here and it changes based on what the view you would like to see. Um so if you want a pie chart, for example, here it's showing you the 2020 amended. If you just scroll the bar, it will take you to the actual. So you can see there are a lot of different ways to look at it. That is designed that way because everybody likes to see information differently. Over here on the left side, you can see if you click on filters, here's a different way to get information. Right now, we're looking at 2020, but you can pick any year that we have data represented represented. And again, select which way you like to see the information. Here in this sort category, you can change it and sort from small to large by chart of accounts, et cetera. These are the three things that are showing up in this view. So we put these three funds in because those were the funds that at the time we were talking about the most. But for example, if you wanted to just see one fund, let's say we want to just look at general fund, you simply change that criteria and it will change your view. You also have the ability to select different departments. So these are the departments that are listed within our ledger. Same thing with the funds. Here's where you can show revenues, expenditures, or revenues versus expenditures. So there's a lot of different ways that you can see the data. It really just depends on what you're trying to look at. And again, each view that you see down below is the numbers tied to those. So last week, Roger sent on behalf of finance a financial report and I wanted to show you how that ties to the system. So if I pick revenues versus expenditures and I change and just pick up the general fund and scroll over here to the left, this July 2020 actual shows that at the end of July, revenues were lower than expenditures by 6.2 million. That corresponds to the report that I sent. Now, the report that I sent is a summarized versions of the categories that we put into the financial statements. But from this page, you could expand into the revenues. Sorry, I have to go back and forth here a little bit. Um but if you expand the revenues, you will see the various categories. And then as long as there is still an arrow, you can continue to drill down. Again, you can change which years you would like to look at. If you click on the actual tab as opposed to the expense versus budget, this gives you more of the annual information. So this is where you might want to take a look at what has happened over the years. And so here, for example, this is showing you expenses and it is breaking it down into these various categories. If you wanted to just, for example, look at personnel, you click on that and it changes the view so that you can see the items over the years that are tied into those various categories. Again, your graph information at the top, the numbers at the bottom, and your ability to change that look either by selecting a different type of graph or hovering over the information. And again, you have the ability to expand down below and it will show you the various categories that go into personnel or into salaries. So some accounts, some categories of accounts have lots of individual accounts that make up the total. Some don't have as many. Um. If you change it again over here, it will change your revenue and if you collapse that, then you would see your revenue information here. Or if you want to just see revenues versus expenditures, again, just changing how it looks. On this side, if you clicked on taxes because you want to look at taxes, but then you realize that wasn't really what you wanted to see, you can either click on reset and it will take you back to the very first view that you saw when you entered into here. Or if you just click the back one time, it will take you back to the last view. So the reports that are in these categories, they are canned reports that we have built, but you do have the ability to modify and filter on a variety of things. If there are items that you are not seeing in what is provided here, we have the ability to add additional reports. As I said, these are what was determined to be um desirable at the time this system was implemented. Um we have not changed it since that time, but that is due to the fact that when we implemented the system, I had three identified FTEs to implement and manage the system. And two of the three FTEs at the end of September, beginning of October, were no longer a part of finance. Those positions are now filled, they are trained, and they are working on learning this system and building more views and reports for you to look at. So I know that's very quick. Um I can go through every one of these, but each one that you look at is tells a similar story. So at the time, for example, public safety was an area that there were a lot of questions. So a report or a view was built specifically about public safety to show the various divisions within the police department. And you can see here that it shows you your actuals cumulatively through the year. And then at the end here, it also shows you the amended budget and the variance. So I can stop there or I can continue to show you a few other views. It really is based on what each person wants to see and how they um change the filters to look at the information. I encourage you to look at it and play with it a little bit and perhaps that will help form your suggestions of new reports or if there are questions, if you have had the opportunity to look at it, I'm happy to answer those.
Anyone here in council have any questions at this time? Councilwoman Grimes?
Thank you, Mayor. Not a question, just want to say thank you, Cheryl. This is really helpful information and nice quick walkthrough, uh very user friendly, it looks like. So thank you for the the information.
Yes, the system does provide a lot of detail. As I mentioned, the financial report I sent out was more the summarized version. But I did want to be able to demonstrate the correlation between the two systems and um certainly try to identify any additional needs or requests for reporting that you have. And then my hope is that um as my new staff gets more familiar with this system, we will build our financial reports right out of this system. Um it's just very detailed, so we have to figure out how to, you know, um you know, mirror the two a little bit better.
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. No, I really like this this product. This is um really great work. You know, I I always love to see something simplified where it kind of triggers a thought and allows you to drill down and get more uh granular if you need to, but this gives a really good general layout of where we're at and gives options from there. So it couldn't be more supportive. I think you've done a great job. Um this should be a very valuable tool for us. So uh again, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you, Cheryl. And the beauty of this is that it's available to everyone, not just the city council, but also the whole community. So it goes a long way to addressing transparency and being accountable. And I can't uh thank you anymore than I am right now, just because it's really terrific. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. That is a very valuable tool. Um I'm glad that it was finally presented to everybody so they know how to go in and get the information that they're looking for. Um greatly appreciate your time this evening. And next on the agenda is a capital projects overview. Will interim city manager Tinklenberg please make the presentation?
Dylan, can you pull it up, please? Thank you, sir. Next slide. So I wanted to give this background for city council so that you have uh the larger context in view when we talk about the actual capital projects that are proposed. And so over the years, eighteen of the nineteen years now that I've been with the city, I've been accumulating lists of projects that need to occur at some time or another. And uh so I wanted to identify those. There's there's four main categories, drainage facilities uh as well as uh facilities, meaning buildings, uh that type of thing. New parks and recreation amenities, which includes open space and trails, all of that, as well as roads. And uh the other part of that, of course, is to identify funding sources for meeting those needs. And then based on that information, plan for the capital maintenance projects and also lay the groundwork to develop a long-term strategy for funding those various projects. Next slide, please. We have a classification of projects into three main categories. Those are the traditional new construction projects as well as then operational capital projects, which include things like signals and bridge replacements and that type of thing, as well as preservation capital projects. And that's more of the uh maintenance replacement type of work such as uh road overlay and and uh doing concrete flatwork and that type of thing. And then we also have uh facility fleet and information technology, which are our three internal service funds. They also have long-term capital projects. And uh so again, we're using a similar type of approach for them. It's just that they're funded through those internal service funds, not through the uh CIPP typically anyway. Next slide. To date, uh we have the following identified needs. Um and this, I would give you this caveat, uh these are certainly not all encompassing, uh because every year it seems like we identify additional needs. So the first category in this area is uh CDOT, CDOT projects that require some city participation. And uh to give you an example, uh the city will share part of the hundred and twentieth and US eighty-five project. Um we show our contribution as eight million dollars at this point. The total project is uh well over ninety million dollars. Uh drainage projects, we have uh at least seventy-five million of projects identified. And uh parks, recreation, golf, uh hundred and seventy-two million estimated. And again, there's multiple funding sources for parks, recreation, golf, and those include Adams County Open Space as well as the general fund and lottery money. Street projects, uh current estimate is seven hundred and forty-one million, almost seven hundred and forty-two million. Um there we have multiple funding sources, including the general fund, highway user tax, road impact fees, solid waste and transportation tax. We also have utility projects and these are uh built by the uh primarily the general improvement districts, but uh general fund may also contribute to those. And those are currently estimated at fifty-five million. And so the total of that, based on current estimates, and I'll show you in a minute, some of those estimates are rather old. It's well over a billion dollars. Next slide. These are all the various uh capital improvement uh program funding sources. Uh again, I'll run through these uh a little more detailed later on. Next slide. Ballot measure two K was approved back in two thousand fourteen or two thousand thirteen, sorry. And uh it authorized the issuance of a hundred and sixty-six million dollars worth of bonds. Uh to date, one hundred and twenty-eight million of bonds have been issued. So there are additional bonds that could be issued. However, uh we're not recommending that because it takes additional money from the general fund to pay off those bonds. And uh right now, the general fund is um stressed by, due to COVID nineteen pandemic. The other uh part of the ballot measure was that it approved a permanent one-point increase in the sales and use tax. And the type of projects that are authorized uh were specifically the new recreation center, now called Bison Ridge. Uh major improvements to Tower Road, a new seasonal outdoor pool, which is now called Paradise Island in the southern part of the city. Three new neighborhood parks and additions to the Southern Recreation Center, now called Eagle Point. It also authorized ongoing projects and maintenance. And so uh the authorized projects are any type of parks, recreation and roadway improvements. And then uh also maintenance of the facilities that are built with the two K funding. Next slide, please. So these are the annual capital improvement uh funding sources. And these are estimated based on recent history. Um you'll see general fund had been at two point nine million. For twenty twenty-one, we're recommending no transfer from general fund. Um transportation tax, one point six million. But again, keep in mind that uh with the impact of COVID nineteen and and business shutdown, uh people were not traveling as much and therefore uh we will likely see a decrease in that funding. Solid waste, uh again, is restricted to dealing with the impacts of the landfill, so it's primarily restricted to streets. And then uh I color coded these so that uh B and C, for example, those are for streets as well as F and G. Um D and E are for parks, recreation, golf type of projects, so those are colored green. So that's the color coding. Um Parks Recreation Golf is funded by Adams County Open Space and Conservation Trust, which is the lottery money, uh are both restricted to those types of activities. And total approximate annual amount from that is about nine point right around nine point two million dollars. Next slide. Then we also have uh annual excess revenue in the two K operation and maintenance account. And that one's color coded green and uh light orange because it can be used for street projects and parks recreation and golf. And that's uh estimated at three million per year, but but again, in twenty twenty-one, uh that revenue will be decreased. Uh parks impact fee, that is based on a number of permits that are pulled and the type of permits. Uh and that's approximately six hundred and fifty-one thousand per year. Road impact fee, same type of thing. It varies with the number of permit permits that are pulled and that's for street projects. And then we have uh drainage type of uh specific fees that are assessed per permit in these uh various drainage basins. And we have four currently uh identified. And you can see the amount that comes in from each of those. So the total of that is approximately five million dollars per year. Next slide. So the plan for capital maintenance projects is to use the CIP funding sources that are primarily for operational and preservation capital projects. And so um the idea is that we will continue funding those operation and preservation projects out of these uh annual funding sources, these annual um revenues that come in and to a limited extent, new projects. And of that, uh again, repeating from earlier, two point nine million from the general fund is flexible. It can go anywhere to any type of project. Uh annually, about five million dollars to roads and streets. And again, highway user tax will drop off uh both this year and next year. Uh and then we have about one point two million for parks, recreation and golf. Next slide. So that leaves us with the new capital projects, that billion dollars worth that we have to fund somehow. Um and the proposal is to use restricted and targeted CIP funding sources for those new projects. Um about three point one million flexible from two K, uh eight hundred and five thousand from roads, road impact fees, six hundred and fifty-one thousand for uh Parks Recreation Golf and about two hundred and sixty-three thousand for drainage. And again, the amount depends on the basin. Then we also have the two K bonds, uh that thirty-seven million of capacity that's left. And then we also have the general improvement districts. Next slide. So the first uh general improvement district is the NIGID. The Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District was uh formed back in nineteen ninety-eight. And that was to fund water and sewer main trunk lines. And then in two thousand and five, ballot language was approved to fund new street capital projects uh aimed primarily at a hundred and fourth avenue. Later, we had uh an interpretation by the bond attorneys that tax revenue may only be used to pay bonds. And so uh effectively, the NIGID cannot fund much more in projects. Uh the reason I say not much more is because there is some non-tax revenue, but it's uh pretty limited. Next slide. Then we have the two newer general improvement districts. Uh one is the um, oh, I have a typo. Instead of EDA, it's supposed to be ECA. Uh so that's the E four seventy commercial area general improvement district. And then the other one is the E four seventy residential area general improvement district. Those were both uh established in twenty thirteen and their purpose is to fund drainage, parks, recreation, streets, trails, transportation, utilities, water and sewer trunk lines. And those are uh written broadly so that we do not have the same problem that we do with the NIGID. The only limit there is the assessed valuation to support bond payments, uh the debt service, as well as fund ongoing projects. So effectively, these two can fund many projects in the future. Next slide. So this is a partial list of parks and trail projects. I'm not gonna talk about each one in detail. You can see that these are fairly recent, uh last year's cost estimates and totaled to about one hundred and seventy-two and a half million dollars. Next slide. These are uh priority projects for CDOT and also drainage projects, uh partial master list. Now, for example, the first one under drainage is Buffalo Run Outfall. That cost estimate is from two thousand and three. And uh there's several more down below that are from two thousand and three. Some are twenty twenty estimates. So again, you know, some are very outdated outdated, but uh that's the best we have at this point. And uh the ones for uh drainage projects, current estimate is about seventy-five and a half million dollars. Next slide. Street project master list, again, uh cost estimates range all the way from two thousand and three to uh twenty twenty. Next slide. And the total for that is uh approximately, you know, seven hundred and forty-two million for the city share of those projects. Next slide. And then we have uh priority projects for utilities and And then we have priority projects for utilities, and this just identifies some of the near-term projects. These are projects that would basically, number one, provide utilities east of E four seventy. And that's in conjunction with Third Creek West Development. And then also Pressure Zone Forty-One, both piping and storage. In addition to Sewer Collector Main in Third Creek Basin, that would allow Legato East to proceed. Total for those is approximately fifty-five million for the general improvement district share. Next slide, I'm sorry, I'll continue on here. So go back one, I'm sorry, Dylan. Sorry. So the grand total of all of that, as I mentioned before, a billion fifty-two million. So, next slide. So that raises the question, how do we fund a billion dollars worth of capital projects? And all we can do is take it in small bites every year. And what I'm proposing is that over fifty years, we fund that billion dollars worth of capital projects. These are our annual sources of funds that I had talked about earlier. Those annually total about nine million. Next slide. And then strategy number two would be to use the restricted and targeted funds for new capital projects as well as the two K bonds. And that estimated benefit is almost five million dollars per year. Next slide. Strategy number three, I had reported earlier, the Reunion Sales and Use Tax Agreement. Our early numbers showed that eighteen point six million was expended by reunion. And we have reimbursed them eleven point one million so far. So I would recommend that we either extend the agreement or dedicate those fees and taxes to capital projects in the future. The benefit would be eventually funding a hundred and fifty-one million dollars worth of projects. Next slide. This would be, basically, these are the projects that totaled one hundred and fifty-one point three million. Next slide. And then strategy number four would be to use the ECA GID and the ERA GID for projects that benefit their inclusion area. There's a two billion dollar authorized debt limit for each. And the modeling, based on estimated levels of development, indicate that four hundred million can be funded over the next fifty years. Next slide. Strategy number five would be up to city council, and that would be to ask the NIGID voters for authorization to use part of the taxes to fund projects benefiting their area. Current mill levy is twenty mils. We may be able to lower that again in the future. But that would have to be part of the strategy that the city council would decide. And the benefit would depend on the authorization and the mill levy. Next slide. Strategy, strategy number six would be to form a Northern DIA General Improvement District when development wants to start north of DIA. And I would recommend starting the mill levy at thirty mils and then be able to lower that mill levy later. And the benefit would depend on authorization and the mill levy again. Next slide. So strategy number two, two hundred and forty-four million over fifty years. Strategy number three, one hundred and fifty-one million over, don't know how many years, but I would estimate that it's probably going to be close to fifty years. Strategy number four would be four hundred million over fifty years. So the benefit of those strategies would be seven hundred and ninety-five point nine million, so almost seven hundred and ninety-six million that could be funded that way. Next slide. So grand total of those, seven hundred and ninety-five compared to a billion fifty-two. That leaves two hundred and fifty-six, almost two fifty-seven million that would need to be funded either through grants, NIGID, some type of authorization to fund projects, as well as other funding sources. Next slide. So my question would be, what information does council need in preparation for determining a long-term strategy? And do you have any questions before you go into your discussion?
Councilman Nurse?
Yeah, I think, first of all, thanks for the detail on that. I think this becomes part of a tougher conversation because, you know, drainage, drainage projects aren't, aren't like the joyful projects that you can celebrate, but they are very necessary for us to build and prepare for development. I wasn't sure if I was allowed to say sexy, so they're not the sexy projects, sorry. That was the way I was trying to get that kind of analogy out of my head, but they're, they're very necessary, and we see that, you know, in several situations in our neighborhoods. If we're going to continue developing along the Tower Road corridor and then the east to E four seventy, there are several obstacles, and most of them are drainage, to be able to be successful out there. And so one of the things that I'd like to kind of strategize around is that's also very important to educate the public about that. Because, you know, when we go into this comprehensive planning, we all want to see massive, you know, public engagement, public feedback. But having that conversation, the reality of the conversation of if we want to see some of these things, then we have to invest greatly into the drainage projects that support them. Or the transportation network, getting it right before we build it, you know. And so those come with significantly large investments. Right now, you know, we're kind of married to GIDs and metro districts and all of that to support that. But kind of ensuring as we're doing this comprehensive plan and coming up with our long-term strategies, that that is very much part of the conversation, is that some of these projects that we must, we must get done, don't look, they're not as noticeable once the project is completed, once the developer comes in and builds kind of in that area. But if they weren't completed, we would have never gotten to the point that we are in development. And so I think that's where the conversation gets tough, because those numbers are exhausting, they're mind-boggling to think about that much money. And we talk about it like it's such a small number, but and we all know that that is a significant fifty-year commitment to attain those types of goals. And so, you know, for me, you know, you guys have done a fantastic job kind of compiling that list of needs. How do we educate the public that we have to prioritize many, many things, many things on that list in order to get to where we want, understanding that those cost burdens are going to be passed on to those that are, that are living in the area that it's developed in. And there are going to be long-term cost burdens, you know, from, from a tax or from a bond debt point of view. And so, you know, understanding that those are our priorities today will have long-term effects and making sure that we're still prioritizing in those directions. And so that's what I would ask be part of our strategy, is making sure that we have the messaging that supports just how important those projects really are. So we all consider them when we're talking about our long-term planning and how we're going to plan our budget to align with our comprehensive plan.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I thank you for that presentation and look forward to your next one of SIP project requests.
Dylan, if you could pull that up. While he's doing that, I would just say, you know, we're funding at about fifteen million per year to do a billion dollars over fifty years. That's twenty million per year, so I think it's achievable. Thank you, Dylan. Next slide. So purpose of this presentation is to give you the capital improvement program framework, as well as show you what has been requested for currently identified needs and identify the funding sources and then plan for the projects, maintenance projects, as well as provide you information prior to the budget retreat. Next slide. Again, I mentioned in the previous presentation, we divided into three types of capital projects, the traditional new projects and then operational capital projects that replace components of that system. And then third one is preservation capital projects that basically is, is capital maintenance type of work. Next slide. So current identified needs. We have a project that is grant-funded through C dot and Dr. Cog and that will require some city participation. And the city's participation will be a hundred thousand dollars for one hundred and fourth Avenue. And note that our city share varies by the project, by type of project and the type of funding that comes into the project. Drainage projects, the estimate is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Buffalo Run area drainage study. There's a variety of development that drains through Buffalo Run Golf Course, primarily north of one hundred and twelfth Avenue. And that needs to be basically come up with a better plan on how to manage that flow. And the funding source for that is the Buffalo Run tributary drainage basin fee. Then we have Parks Recreation and Golf Projects, estimated at eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. And that's for both preservation projects, Buffalo Run Back Nine Fence and Golf Course Irrigation. So the Golf Course Irrigation is a huge project, about three and a half million. But the first year is just for design work, starting the planning for it. The funding sources for that include Adams County Open Space Park Impact Fee and Lottery Funds. And then we have street projects, the estimate is thirteen, almost thirteen and a half million. And that will be funded out of Derby Urban Renewal Authority, or Urban Renewal Area, I should say. And Highway User Tax, Road Impact Fees, Solid Waste, Transportation Tax and two K Fund Balance. So the estimated total for those projects is fifteen point three million. Next slide. Here again are the funding sources that were mentioned previously. And the one that I don't recall listing on here is the Derby Urban Renewal Area. That has a fund balance that is built up and is able to fund some projects. So I will be planning to make a presentation to the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority for approval of, of that funding source. Next slide. So this is continuation of funding sources, talked about the two K one cent sales and use tax increase. And initially, all of that money was dedicated to the five major development projects. And following the completion of the projects, Kipkak was reestablished in two thousand eighteen, but it did not meet in two thousand twenty due to COVID nineteen. And as discussed earlier with council, we have had difficulty recruiting additional members to Kipkak. Next slide. We will need to amend the policy for transfers from the general fund because I am recommending no transfer from general fund. Otherwise, normally it would have been a two point nine million dollar transfer that would have helped fund pavement management in those type of projects. I've come up with a different way to fund those, and so you'll see that here in a minute. We also may need to amend the contingency policy. Currently, whenever we show contingency for capital projects, that contingency is not used and it remains in the general fund. And given that those funds come from restricted monies, for example, highway user tax or transportation tax, that type of thing, that money should not stay in the general fund, it should be in the capital improvement program. So we will be working on how to have that brought to council for approval. And then we have loans and transfers for non-traditional projects. And those are previewed in the yearly highlights slides. So next slide, please. So here's a summary of the proposed five-year plan. You can see that Parks Recreation Golf Preservation Projects. And word of explanation on that, those projects include replacing place structures. It may include replacing anything from trash receptacles to shelters, that type of thing. Anything that is showing age, wear and tear and needs to be replaced. And you see that for two thousand twenty-one, we're proposing six hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then it drops down for two years while we fund the irrigation project. Street reconstruction, this is a new category. We've had streets that are so deteriorated, they need a total reconstruction, and so they don't really fit in pavement management. And we're proposing a half a million dollars for two thousand twenty-one. And then it drops off two thousand twenty-two and then back up to five hundred thousand in two thousand twenty-three. And again, varying with what we believe will be identified needs. Pavement management, we're showing that at two million for two thousand twenty-one. And then increasing in the following years, traffic signal maintenance, a hundred thousand per year. Bridge maintenance program, one hundred and sixty-six thousand. Not proposing anything for several years on the city parking lot maintenance. And then operational type of projects, concrete flatwork, sidewalk connectivity, Derby area lighting improvements, that's one to be funded out of Derby. Fairfax, nothing for several years, and then Buffalo Run Grounds Equipment Replacement. That is coming out of the Fleet Fund. Buffalo Run Golf Course Irrigation, this is the project I talked about. So a hundred and forty thousand of that is for design work in two thousand twenty-one and then three and a half million in two thousand twenty-two. We have the Buffalo Run Drainage Study I mentioned earlier, Buffalo Run Back Nine Fence, traffic, traffic signal. That is to build another traffic signal that we anticipate will need to be done. And then railroad crossing reconstruction, this year the railroad rebuilt a crossing. And we're being invoiced and we don't have anything budgeted for it, so came as a surprise. So we're trying to avoid that in two thousand twenty-one and then fund it again in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. Traditional projects, so these are the big new construction projects. Eighty-eighth Avenue Widening, another four million dollars, and you can see that tapers off one point five million in two thousand twenty-two and one point three million in two thousand twenty-three. And then I mentioned the one hundred and fourth Avenue Local Match, a hundred thousand. Hundred and twentieth Avenue Widening, one point eight million. Hundred and twelfth Avenue Chambers to Parkside, final, one point six million. And a note on that, Adams County has agreed to fund part of that, so that will actually reduce in two thousand twenty-one. But that agreement has not been executed yet at this point. Rosemary Street Widening, we're showing additional contributions there. Derby Improvements, three hundred thousand, again, that would be proposed for the Derby URA, and then Long Lane Striping. Note on Sixty-Second Avenue Vasquez, I noted there in parentheses My High Greyhound Park. And later on, once we get closer to that project being designed, I will be going back to the Urban Renewal Authority Board with a proposal, assuming the TIF pro forma will absorb it pro forma will absorb it to fund that out of TIF funds coming out of the My High Greyhound Park. For two hundred thousand for design work in twenty twenty two and two million for actual intersection construction. Next slide. So this is the overview of the twenty twenty one requested projects. I just ran through those. This is a summary listing. Next slide. So some of the highlights, it does not require any general fund money for twenty twenty one. It provides for an additional one point eight million for a hundred and twenty eighth Avenue Widening to enable two through lanes in each direction. The original proposal coming in from the Metro District and developer was to build two through lanes going eastbound, but leave it only one lane westbound on the north side. And that does not function well for a hundred and twentieth Avenue. And so I'll show a little more detail in the following presentation. This also provides for the design work for the Buffalo Run Golf Course Irrigation System. Provides one railroad crossing replacement and provides for one street reconstruction. Next slide. Twenty twenty two highlights requires only two hundred thousand from the general fund. Hopefully by then, the general fund will be recovering. And that would be a proposed loan to the Urban Renewal Authority for design work at sixty seven, sixty second Avenue and Vasquez. It also provides three and a half million for the Buffalo Run Golf Course Irrigation System. And again, what we're doing there is covering that additional amount out of the general fund. And that would be repaid by twenty twenty four and it provides for one street reconstruction. Next slide. Provides for twenty twenty three, provides a two million dollar loan from general fund to the Urban Renewal Authority for Vasquez and sixty second Avenue. Provides match money for C dot widening of the hundred and fourth Avenue between US eighty five and the South Platte River. And provides for one railroad crossing replacement and one street reconstruction. Next slide. Twenty twenty four provides four hundred thousand to start the design work of widening ninety sixth Avenue between I seventy six and Highway Two. That probably will end up looking somewhat like eighty eighth Avenue, but that's just my guess at this point. It may end up having to be four lanes, not sure. It also provides match money for C dot widening of a hundred and fourth Avenue. And funds to restart the Parks Recreation Golf Preservation Program. And then it finishes the funding to widen Rosemary Street, provides for one railroad crossing replacement and a street reconstruction. Next slide. Twenty twenty five provides a million for design and pre-construction work for widening ninety sixth Avenue. Finishes match money for C dot widening of a hundred and fourth. And funds one point four four million for Fairfax Park Drainage Reconstruction. And provides for railroad crossing replacement and a street reconstruction. Next slide. So the question is, that assumes that we would fund all of those projects out of the available funding. However, that begs the larger question, and that is, does that include any and all projects that city council would want to see? Or are there additional projects, in which case we will need to reduce funding or eliminate one of these existing projects that's recommended?
Questions or comments from council? Councilman Wadiola?
Thank you, Mayor. Roger, on the proposed five-year plan for Parks Rec and Golf Preservation. I think I would like to know if the estimates, especially for the playground, equipment, shelters. Are they going to be on inclusive ADA? I think we set the the bar really high with Veterans Park. And I know for myself would like to see that throughout the city, especially when we're getting into replacing some of the playground equipment and shelters, six hundred and sixty one. Does that include that or have we not looked into that?
That, as I recall, is the traditional, what's there now just being replaced. So, you know, if we're going to go for a large reconstruction, then we would need to supplement this and seek grant funding to, you know, do a full accessible, inclusive playground. Playground like we did at Veterans Memorial Park.
And I think where I think if it's for replacing just equipment. We don't have to reconstruct the whole park. I think we could place elements. I know in Thornton, for example, Scott Carpenter Park has some elements of inclusivity. So to lower the cost, I think if we're replacing this, maybe look into that. How we just replace that slide and that swing set into have larger swings for for everybody. So I think for myself, and I don't know how the other council members would, what they think. But I think that's something that we have to take in consideration now, especially if we're doing the budget. And if we have to add or find some more funding. I just think that's kind of the expectation that I would like to go for our residents, that all parks eventually gets that point. Piece by piece, little by little, year by year. So definitely think if we could look into that and how many, which playgrounds, which parks, we're going to be doing some work into that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a valid point. What I can tell you is the master planning that is underway for Bison Ridge Recreation Center. Eventually, there's to be a, you know, playground there. And that is intended to be fully accessible and inclusive, you know. So designing it new, you bet, it's going to be fully accessible like like the one in Veterans Memorial Park.
Thank you for those comments, Councilman Wadiola. I think that you're spot on. That is, we're replacing equipment. It should be moving in that direction. As well as any new construction, but again, that's going to require us to dedicate more money to that. So as long as we're on the same page and wishing to see our city move in that direction, and that's something we'll have to take up in a couple of weeks. Councilwoman Noble?
Thanks very much. You mentioned the railroad that you didn't anticipate that cost. And I'm curious about another one that I don't see on there. So I'm thinking about projects that are foisted on us that we don't anticipate. So they're not on a wish list, they just appear. It's my understanding that if the wastewater pipeline is approved through Second Creek. That all of that area plus the roads would have to be fixed again, if you will. And I don't see it on that list. Where is the money coming from? Should that pipeline in Commerce City be approved?
I do want to jump in if I can, not to be a spoilsport. That is a matter of a quasi judicial hearing that's coming in front of council in September. So I just want to make sure that any answers or information are limited to things that won't affect the public hearing in that. But I believe Roger can answer, most likely. Thank you.
So Robert, you're going to have to kick me under the table. So what what I will tell you is that our negotiations with the applicant is that they will be building a multi-purpose path in conjunction with installing that sewer line. Which will double as both their access road for, you know, their maintenance vehicles as well as recreational path through that Second Creek Corridor. The, they have to restore the land that they disturbed. And so we should not have any cost with that. Where they do disturb the road, they're they are to, again, bear that cost. The only open question I believe in my mind at this point is the crossing on Chambers Road. We have to rebuild Chambers Road at some point soon anyway. So it's it's a question of how we integrate those two together. So I will be working with staff to have that better developed by the time this comes to the city council.
And with the growing population and development in the northern area. Does this plan leave room for the addition of parks?
The plan that I laid out for you for the actual projects does not anticipate any additional parks in the next five years. And again, that's, that should be coming out of the comprehensive plan, Parks Recreation Golf Component of the Comprehensive Plan. In terms of identifying where those parks should be, what, you know, what size, what configuration, that type of thing. So currently, it's not in the five-year plan for that reason. But again, once we have that information, then we can start planning for those.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, want to thank you again for a good presentation. Appreciate all the information leading up to our budget retreat. It's always good that we're better whenever we have more information going into it. And able to ponder decisions that we need to make. So thank you very much to you and for staff for preparing this. Okay, that is the end of our presentation agenda. Next on the agenda is administrative council business.
Quick question, Eric. Sorry. Sorry to interrupt. Do you want the hundred and twentieth Avenue presentation? Or are you comfortable with the strategy that are recommended in that presentation?
Why don't you go ahead and give that presentation? The rest of council hasn't seen it. I've seen the preliminary drawings. Very exciting what has been drawn up, especially, I'm just going to highlight real quick. One of the things that they did do was take a look at pedestrian access on a hundred and twentieth Avenue for students getting from the eastern part of the northeast part of our city over to the high school and the middle school. That includes a sidewalk that leads up to the bridge there as well as a crossing crosswalk for the students coming out of villages of Buffalo Run in the west. So I am excited the fact that we may have an opportunity here to take care of a huge safety issue that's been brought to our attention. About almost a year ago from residents who were up in that area that were concerned about their kids being able to get to school. So with that, please show them the design that they've come up with.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Next slide, Dylan. So this is to review the budget for an already scheduled road improvement project. We're proposing moving a commitment by the Metro District of money that's been committed to a hundred and twelfth Avenue. Moving that up to a hundred and twentieth Avenue since we've already internally funded a hundred and twelfth Avenue. Next slide. So council previously approved contributing funds to the Buffalo Ridge and Reunion Metro Districts to improve both a hundred and twentieth Avenue from Chambers to Buckley and a hundred and twelfth Avenue from Potomac to Parkside. Construction estimates to adequately improve a hundred and twentieth Avenue came in higher. Because as I mentioned earlier, the decision was made that two lanes going eastbound and one lane westbound is not adequate for safety and traffic flow. Next slide. So currently, the city does not have enough funding identified for improving the north side of a hundred and twentieth Avenue. Buffalo Ridge is prepared to commit that one million for approving a hundred and twelfth Avenue. But we had not entered into an agreement yet. And so I asked them if they would be willing to move that to a hundred and twentieth Avenue instead. And they are agreeable to moving that money. And so we're discussing a new agreement with them. Next slide. Next slide, Dylan. So the south side estimate came in at just under four and a half million with a fifteen percent contingency. The north side estimate totals two point three million with contingency. We have one point one million budgeted for the project. We can move one million from the hundred and twelfth Avenue project. And we will also request Adams County assistance in this project. Because there are incorporated areas that that join it. Next slide. There are improvements to a hundred and twelfth and and you've seen that improvement. The paving is done, striping is done, and we're just waiting on the signalization at Chambers Road. That will be completed by Reunion Metro District. And as I mentioned, we've budgeted adequate funds to complete that without needing the one million dollars from Buffalo Ridge. And they had committed one million to that, and so they're willing to move that to a hundred and twentieth. And so that allows basically part of the funding for a hundred and twentieth. Next slide. So does council support that effort? It would mean that we would budget one point eight million in twenty twenty one to complete that funding for that project. Next slide. So that's, actually, I should leave it at the previous slide, Dylan. Thank you. So that's really the question, you know, do you support that effort? Are you willing to commit that additional one point eight million that I've included in the funding requests for twenty twenty one?
Questions or comments from staff, excuse me, from council to staff? Councilwoman Grimes?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Roger, for the presentation. I have maybe some comments and questions. I'm definitely supportive of the project and would like to see us dedicate that additional money to make sure that the project is executed properly the first time, rather than kind of doing what we can with what's available. You know, without the city's extra commitment. I think there's some good opportunities up there for development along a hundred and twentieth. We just need the infrastructure. As well as the safety piece, I agree with you, Mayor. There are some real challenges getting across a hundred and twentieth. Specifically, students who are trying to get over to the the middle school and high school. So I'm a hundred percent supportive of the project and and certainly the additional allocation of money. My question is, have has city staff thought about inquiring with City of Brighton? Because I think there's some adjacent City of Brighton properties that could benefit from this project as well. I'm thinking specifically over in the Sable and a hundred and twentieth areas where they've continued to have signs for a project but no development. And it seems like infrastructure might be helpful to them as well.
I've informed Brighton that they need to make improvements within their jurisdiction. There is one small parcel that currently is in the City of Brighton that adjoins this area because our project will go all the way from the I seventy six bridge to Buckley Road. So it'll improve everything within Commerce City in addition to that small parcel. But that small parcel was included in the latest intergovernmental agreement between Brighton and Commerce City. And it's to be de-annexed from Brighton and annexed into Commerce City. So we will include that in, you know, our portion of the project. But as far as going west from the I seventy six bridge, that will need to be the City of Brighton.
Thanks, Roger.
Councilwoman Noble?
Roger, could you explain again why there is a million dollars from the one twelve project available for a hundred and twentieth?
So that was a commitment by Buffalo Ridge for the eventual construction of a hundred and twelfth Avenue. That was in one of the what is it now, thirty nine, was it forty nine? We have so many intergovernmental agreements with Buffalo Ridge Metro District. I've lost count, quite frankly. Jenna knows the number of them. But it's in one of those agreements where they committed to that. And so they're willing to instead move that million dollars to a hundred and twentieth Avenue. Since we're able to cover a hundred and twelfth Avenue out of our existing funds. And we're short at a hundred and twentieth Avenue. So it's just a mutual agreement between us and them, basically.
So we had enough for a hundred and twentieth up to Parkside. And then what would be the cost of doing Parkside to Tower? What are we looking at there eventually? There's homes all along there now, and it's a dirt road.
Yes, that is uh multi-million dollars more. Um I don't recall. I'm just looking here on my screen trying to find. See if I can find that real fast.
That's alright. Multi-million covers it for me. I don't need to get more detailed than that. That's perfect. I do agree that. Uh one hundred and twentieth needs fixing desperately. And it certainly seems to be a gateway street uh from the northern end of Commerce City and needs that kind of attention. To not look quite as unruly as it does right now and for safety reasons as well. So it's it's a it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mariola.
Thank you, Mayor. Um you said that there might be a construction of the bridge. What's the cost of that bridge?
I'm sorry, which bridge?
From the western part of or the neighborhood to the other side of one hundred and twentieth because it's much needed for the. Students to walk over.
Oh, the I seventy six bridge uh is currently wide enough to accommodate uh two lanes of traffic in each direction. Plus it has the uh sidewalk, I know, uh on the north side. So, you know, it already provides safe walking across the bridge.
I think uh comments got confused. Councilman Mariola was talking about a crosswalk across one hundred and twentieth. So that students uh there can get to the other to the north side to use that bridge, to use the walkway on the bridge that is currently not being used.
Okay, yeah, no, because I was thinking because a nice bridge over would be good too. Okay, thank you.
Another thing, uh there's also potential for a traffic light there at Cameron, but I know staff was looking at the feasibility. And whether or not there was enough distance between Chambers and Cameron in order to facilitate that. But I think that was included in his cost estimate, correct?
I would have to verify that with Mr. Bush. I I don't recall.
Okay, I I think that one point eight included that additional cost. But a traffic light there would also help all the residents getting out of there. Um also, the way that the uh seven eleven uh intersection is constructed, it's also a little bit difficult getting out of a seven eleven, trying to go west onto. Hundred and twentieth Avenue. So a lot of improvements there being um being considered. So uh Councilman Madera.
Yeah, I think um this is much needed. You know, it's a one hundred and twentieth is a regional arterial roadway there. That uh gets a lot of traffic and uh you know, not just for safety reasons, but also for economic development. And everything else that we have going on down the road. This will, you know, pay off in spades in the future.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Uh Councilwoman Grimes.
Just wanted to follow up your comment about the stoplight potentially at Cameron as well. You know, I've I have also visited with Mr. Bush a little bit about the plans here and the the question of a uh signal light. Versus a crosswalk. And my personal feelings are a signal, signalized intersection is probably better because coming east off of. The bridge, it's a bit of a blind spot um for the good amount of truck, truck, truck traffic that comes over. Uh that bridge at one hundred and twentieth. Um and I'm worried that a a crosswalk is not enough to um. Notify, you know, a semi truck coming across the bridge there, not going to give them enough time. I think a a signalized intersection is probably a better way to go there. Um so just food for thought. And then one other comment, Mr. Mariola, you had asked about the bridge specifically and. Um there is a sidewalk on the north side of the bridge. However, it's only separated by cement barricade. Um like kind of temporary barricades. So it's it's kind of a very temporary looking solution at the moment. So definitely room for improvement there as well.
Um yes, actually, a a fully signalized intersection is the best alternative there. Um especially for vehicles that are trying to go north out of Cameron and get across uh two lanes of one hundred and twentieth eastbound traffic and then to one hundred and twentieth westbound traffic. So hopefully that can be facilitated. Uh Councilman Hurst.
Yeah, thanks. I I fully support this project, I think for a couple of different reasons. Um. You know, we talk about one hundred and twentieth becoming or it already has, but you know, being more recognized as a regional arterial. And and getting more of that those dollars and focus that a a significant regional arterial usually does get. One of the things I think will help us in that argument is making investments now. If we make investments in the core portion of of uh where Commerce City controls, you know, going to an entity like C dot and saying. Or or going in for a federal grant to help us with an overpass, those types of things. If you can show uh you know, that the city has put significant investment into the uh into what is considered a regional road. That only bolsters your argument. You know, you you've been spending um. You know, we don't, our our funding's not quite the same at the level of funding they look at. You know, the a hundred million dollars. Is a lot of money for the city compared to a federal government grant. So um you know, I think. That really helps us put us in a position for other discussions that we've all continued to have on one hundred and twentieth in its future. Um but it also a- as as really everybody was saying, but as Councilman Daras saying, it really kind of breeds. Um the economic development that we're kind of hoping for that whole regional corridor because. I think we all agree that one hundred and twentieth kind of cuts off some of the E four seventy traffic, the those that don't want to utilize E four seventy, come up one hundred and twentieth. And then head head uh south on Tower or vice versa. And so I think that that really could promote that economic uh development uh opportunity. You know, you can start showing just how many sets of eyeballs go past all of these locations. Um using something like streetlight data, and now you have an economic uh development opportunity, a marketing opportunity there. One thing that I that, you know, it continues to get um. Brought up in conversations that I end up having uh with with our constituents about transportation projects, just the cost and how those costs have risen. Even even little details, Roger, if you have this off the top of your head, just how much we spend on like a four-way intersection. Uh doing that type of improvement, something like a four-way intersection at Chambers and one hundred and twelfth. Um or even how much we spend on just uh improvements like we've done at one hundred and fourth and Revere. Just sometimes, you know, you you spew out numbers that that we all hear. And you say that out loud to a constituent, you just sometimes realize just how ridiculous some of these costs uh end up being. Now, they're they're completely necessary. I understand the the how these things work. But the numbers get large, you know, the zeros add up quickly um in these conversations and it and it does feel. Um brutal sometimes when we talk about the cost of these investments. Because I know one hundred and twelfth is kind of exactly what we were talking about earlier of. We all see it as a necessary improvement to the northern, the northern side of our city. But when you start looking at the cost of the drainage projects to get there, it's a significant cost to pave one hundred and twelfth. It's not necessarily the paving portion, it's the preparation to get to that point. And so um. You know, can we, it doesn't have to be right now, but can we have a discussion, maybe ten minutes? Um going into uh our budget session that really discusses kind of. Um costs, maybe at like an à la carte level. And I know when we talk about economies of scale and things like that, but if we can break down kind of. What it costs per intersection, per intersection to add streetlights on one hundred and fourth. Um and maybe, you know, a very high level view, thirty thousand foot view of. What a traffic engineer goes through to determine the best course of action um for a traffic situation. So what determines if a road gets a a stop sign, a speed bump, uh traffic signal, a yield sign. So on and so forth. I think um, you know, because a lot of us do operate on. It feels good that this is the right solution. And then it's frustrating to hear that. A traffic engineer has a completely different mindset. Um you know, speed limits. Uh road signs, all of the above, um people disagree with. And so just trying to give a brief understanding of what goes on in that. Um field, so we all kind of have an understanding, have a better opportunity to communicate that simply to our constituents.
Yeah, uh certainly we can prepare that, you know, just for simplicity's sake. Uh talking at sixty thousand foot level instead of thirty thousand foot level, I use a million dollars per lane mile. And so, you know, if you want a four-lane road, you're talking four million dollars just for pavement. Then if you want a fancy median, you're talking another million per mile. If you want uh. Trails, uh sidewalks, landscaping along each side, you're talking another million on each side. You know, so it that's why it adds up really fast and uh. You know, people are astounded by the cost of just landscaping even. So uh. And signalized intersections, you know, a signal can vary depending on the size and configuration, but. You know, you're talking anywhere from four hundred and seventy thousand to six hundred and seventy thousand for just the signal part of an intersection. So. Yeah, that money adds up really fast. Those are the thumbnail sketch numbers I use, but you know, those are by no means uh accurate. In in the sense of, you know, engineering numbers, but you know, just for round numbers, if you're trying to think, oh, we want to do a project, it's two miles long. What's that going to cost? Well, you know, it starts adding up depending on the configuration. But absolutely, we can provide some of.
Well, and I I appreciate just the round numbers. Obviously, you know, um a a road that's like a hundred and fourth, where in some cases. We have two turn lanes on top of uh two lanes in each direction. Now you need a four-way stoplight that has that that the capability of servicing all those lanes and those increased costs. And just, you know, that type of um. Understanding that we can all kind of bring back to our constituents as we're having that discussion, so we're not giving false numbers or or kind of inflating those. Because quite honestly, at some point you start talking about it, you're like, oh, that's going to be like twenty million dollars, you know, like that's. It's realistic, but you really can't break it down as to why. And so um would appreciate that, just again, the high level view because it is. It is daunting to talk about the whys. Uh why does everything cost so much money? Why is a signal? Four hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, or or a group of four signals. But yeah, I I'd really appreciate that because. It just kind of gives us good talking points as to the challenges that we're seeing in in financing these projects.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith.
Uh I just want to echo kind of what everybody else says. I think I'm definitely in support of um moving all the money in this project. It's necessary for the safety of our kids and for economic development. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Noble.
Boy, when you start talking about additional costs, um I have an ask about bike lane. And this is leading directly to a school. So is that factored into this, Roger, that there will be bike lanes on this road?
I'll have to find out what provision. The bridge itself will not accommodate, you know, any additional like bike lane. So I don't know what else will be done beyond that. So I'll have to find out other details to answer that question for you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I believe that uh there were no, nobody was, man, I cannot talk tonight. I believe nobody was against including that in the budget. So if you can include that in the twenty twenty one budget, that would be great. And thank you again for all the work on the presentations. So moving along, we are now to administrative council business. Um I have a couple of different items that I would like to bring up, but I'll let anybody else go in front of me if they'd like to. Uh Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um I have a serious concern that needs to be addressed. And I want to see how our mayor, city council, city manager and the Commerce City Police Department can address this problem. Um in May, I sent an email addressing a concern from one of my constituents at Monaco Park. Regarding drag racing, residents can't exit their driveway. Um noise after eleven o'clock P M and other concerns. I was informed this was going to get taken care of, and I received another concern from a constituent. Um regarding Monaco Park. Um this Saturday, another incident occurred at Monaco Park. On August twenty third, another incident occurred at Pioneer Park. And I sent an email to the city manager and other staff regarding this incident. Several residents um are now very concerned as to what's going on. How are we going to address this? Um can more safety be um and more monitoring being done been? Uh can more safety be conducted around those two parks? You know, because like I said, at this point, um the constituents and several residents are reaching out to me regarding Pioneer Park. And Monaco Park. And I think this really needs to be addressed because I'm not sure at this point what to tell them. And it seems like as the weekends progress, this is becoming a pattern. So I wanted to see. That's one concern I have. Um another big concern over the weekend, the homeless set up a. Um camp or I guess that's referred to as a camp, but they were camping out already at our new veterans' um memorial park. And they were also um camping out, had numerous shopping carts around the memorial dedication park. Where we usually in the parade sites. Um they're camp camping out by the rec center, McDonald's and the King Super Shopping Center. And this is something I feel that needs to be addressed as well. Um we just, you know, had that part. Done there. Um they were also sleeping around the park on the weekends. Another concern, can staff look into who owns the Commerce City, the King Supers um in Commerce City in my ward. Um the one by the Parkway Shopping Center, because there's nor numerous complaints about the potholes. In that uh shopping plaza, and I think this is unacceptable. So can staff look into that? There's so many people getting ho- uh flat tires from riding in that parking lot. So that's another concern and I, you know, I just want consistency. Like, how can staff and the Commerce City Police Department, you know, work with? The residents in my ward to get these things addressed. And you know, like I said, it's a big concern when you can't go to the park. And you know, on the weekend, someone can't go to the Veterans Memorial Park. Um you know, I'm not saying anything at all against homeless. But can we reach out to the homeless? What are we, how are we going to address this? Um a lot of veterans want to visit the Veteran Memorial Park. And you know, I'm not sure what to tell them, and I'm getting numerous complaints from constituents. I hope can city staff and you know. Our Commerce City Police Department, you know, give us some options as to how we can resolve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments regarding that. I'm absolutely heartbreaking what happened this weekend. Um just hated seeing that email and uh. And my condolences go out to the family that that occurred to. Um this is an issue that uh Mr. Tinklinburg and I have discussed a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. And I too look forward to a um solution that is going to work for all of our residents of Commerce City. So thank you for bringing that up. Um Councilman Hurst.
So, quick topic, same topic. Um. This this goes more around, I hear a lot of talk in in other areas about, you know, a regional solution on homelessness. Uh which would include us, Adams County, Denver City and County, and all of our, you know, neighboring cities. We we live in a metropolitan area. Um we we will have these issues to resolve. Um but one of my concerns tonight is just how I heard about it, how it all went down and how. City staff wasn't engaged and possibly even the neighborhoods. But tonight, Denver City, on Denver City Council's agenda. Um Resolution twenty dash zero eight three three, a resolution approving a proposed lease agreement. Between the city and county of Denver and Dencom LLC for property located at. between the City and County of Denver and Dencom LLC for property located at forty six hundred East Forty Eighth Avenue to support emergency sheltering needs for those experiencing homelessness. What it goes on to say is that the city is going to spend twenty million dollars, just shy of twenty millions, nineteen million and and high change, to commit the next ten years to having a shelter just across from the Swansia neighborhood, right in the business kind of elbow of the two seventy Colorado Boulevard and I seventy corner where they all come together. I don't necessarily look at this as a bad thing, but it is very much moving a a large, a significant shelter to kind of our border. And so as we see in several locations, you set up a shelter and 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 that the homelessness kind of surrounds the area and for, you know, for for different reasons, for different people. And so I know we've had you know, work being done on the Sand Creek homeless camps in the past. I foresee this as kind of, hopefully, we can make this a positive thing of of working with the City and County of Denver as to offering services that are closer to that area with this, you know, if this gets approved. But I also think it's a discussion that I wish we could have had going into that with Denver City, City and County. Because I foresee that our police department and, you know, our services will have to be utilized in this for this location as well. And so I would love to kind of have a regional strategy for this location, being that Sand Creek has state right of way on it, Adams County right of way, or, you know, ownership in the area, ourself and Denver City and County. And so it's really going to be those four agencies, and I I'd be, you know, guessing, I'm sure there's even more involved, that will have to have a strategy moving forward to kind of work towards the homeless problem that will will come with that. And it's not, again, not to co- combat or go after anybody who's homeless. Everybody, you know, that everybody has their reasons, and I'm more than willing to find ways to support them. But the but the other side of that is not everybody wants a shelter service who's homeless. And so we just have to be able to have a good strategy, I think it has to be regional, on how to address the 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 issues that that Councilmember Alan Thomas just brought up. Because, you know, the the current situation, the current climate with the pandemic, you know, the situation is getting worse, meaning there's more people losing their jobs, more people losing their homes and their belongings. And and so we are going to have to address this issue. It's a very unfortunate issue, but but part of our job as leadership is to address these tough issues. And so I'm hoping, you know, this group, and I don't expect the city to have any type of response because it's my understanding that this was not done in conjunction with our city. But but this is something that, you know, Commerce City Police Department will have to rely on their relationship, their close relationship with Denver Police Department. And we're going to have to manage through this with Adams County Sheriff and have a good response plan and work together in a cohesive group, a cohesive task force, if you will, on managing any issues that may come out of this. Thank you. Last thing is that ten year lease has two year, two five year extension options too. So we're potentially looking at twenty years if the contract as written lives out its entire life.
Thank you. Councilman Wadiola.
Yeah, and I think that Councilman Hershey bring up a good point, and I think hopefully staff or even if we could get in front of Denver City Council, because a lot of it is when they're doing their sweeps, they're coming up north, right? And it's it's a it's a situation where it impacts not only Denver, but us and our neighboring northern neighbors, I mean, so, but we're the first stop. So I think we have to really start having the that dialogue with Denver. And, you know, they're going to run their city, how they're going to run it, and that's fine. But it's going to have regional impacts, and how do we collaborate with Denver and the neighboring and cities and and counties, so our staff could start having those that dialogue?
Thank you. Any other administrative council business?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Several questions, one, did anyone have any additional feedback on the legislative budget, that portion?
Councilman Wadiola.
Sorry, I didn't lower my hand. Nope.
All right, then, second question. Is there anything City Council wants added prior to the budget retreat? We're we'll have another follow up coming up here on what is it, September seventeen, I think, fourteen? Yeah, September fourteen, we'll ask the question again. But the more time we have to prepare items prior to the retreat, the the better information we will have for you. So just wanted to check in to see if there was anything that you want us to explore before the retreat.
Councilman Hurst.
I I apologize for not getting my hand up for the first question in time. The only thing I would add from the legislative budget side is we already had a discussion about it, but I wouldn't want to be lost in discussion was the kind of application process that Councilman Gordiola talked about to maintain on the City Council's kind of sponsorship budget that we've had. You know, we, Councilman Gordiola pointed out that some of those organizations might not be around any longer, and we're we're ready and willing to continue donating to their cause, and their cause is no longer serving our community. So I think to continue on that, you know, organizations that City Council seeks to sponsor on an annual basis, whether they're events or organizations in general, I think the least we can ask for is a simple application process, giving us the background and some statistics on how they serve our community. And so I just don't want that to be lost kind of in the discussion, because I think that's a very important process for us moving forward.
Okay. We will catch that one. Thank you.
Councilman Wadiola.
Yeah, hey, Roger, I know in the past, I've, we've talked about interpretation and translating services. Maria Zubia brought that up, and I know Coltavando brought that up with us. Is there any? Has have we done any research on what that would cost? I know last year, we we thought about with Civics Academy, and that's just a a small programming, but I think this is a good opportunity since we are doing remote where other services or organizations have translating services, interpretation services. It's a lot easier doing it via remote than when we're when we're live at the building and getting all the the little ear things they use. Could we look into something like that? Because I think it's a it's a call from our community, especially our Spanish speaking community that want to get involved.
Yes, we are exploring basically a seminar as well as turning the Citizens Academy into Spanish language version as well. For interpretation services, are you thinking for the City Council meetings? Is is that specifically what you're looking for?
Yes, sir, something where they could log in, just kind of how Adams fourteen did today. And other organizations and
I'll have to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Wadiola, for the segue. You actually hit on the majority of my council administrative business things I want to talk about. I've been watching a lot of the social media posts that have come out, and they're entirely in English. I watched the email today go out to the city that have, for people that have signed up for city alerts about the city manager update entirely in English. When you read the city manager update, it is entirely in English. There's some posts that have gone out that have been bilingual, the Maker Housing Authority one, the one concerning the dump. But a vast majority of them going out are not bilingual. And I think that is a shame because a majority, or not a majority, but a large portion of our community could benefit from translation services. So I would like to make a motion that the City Council approve that all social media communication coming from the City of Commerce City be bilingual from here on out. That's my first motion. Councilman Wadiola.
Definitely second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second that all social media posts. And let me also add emails that come out, like the city, city alert emails as well, those all as well. So if it's coming from the city, to include our Twitter account and our Facebook account, you're okay with that? Thank you. I need discussion on that item. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Grimes.
Absolutely supportive of the idea, just want to kind of bring up the same thing we always talk about when we ask staff to do more. Do we have capacity? Do we have someone who can complete those services and still get communication out in a timely fashion? You know, are there any hurdles to consider from a staff perspective? Or even a finance perspective before we before we take a vote?
Yes, ma'am, I believe we have adequate staff who are bilingual that we can, you know, at least cover this portion, yes.
Thanks, Roger.
Councilwoman Noble, you had your hand up, then lowered it, did you want to speak? No, okay, thank you. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurd.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frank, Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Thank you. One comment I want to make regarding that, I do appreciate everybody's support in that. I think that's the right direction moving forward for our city. We used to get a report in the work plan that told us what percentage of stuff was being done bilingual. And as I was thinking about this, I started thinking, when was the last time we had an update on the work plan? Does the work plan still exist? Does the work plan no longer exist? Have we thrown that by the wayside?
The work plan, it sort of exists. What what we're working towards is a infographic type of report. You'll see the first sample of that at coming up here in a few days. And then, so that that's a limited edition, and and we're going to be gradually expanding that to then cover more and more of what used to be in the work plan report so that we're able to provide those updates to council. And that also will replace Troy and I droning on making COVID nineteen reports. So hopefully, it's more interesting to you, more easily accessible, and more easily absorbed. So that's a long winded answer to your question. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you. Next up, I'm going to again caveat on Councilman Wadiola's comments as well as Director Zubia's comments regarding translation services. I also participated in a meeting last week with members that I cannot understand their language and they couldn't understand mine. And it was very impressive to see the Zoom platform be used for interpretive services. There is absolutely zero reason whatsoever why a community like Commerce City is not providing our meetings with the option for bilingual, especially while we're using Zoom and the ability to get somebody like Brava Slavia or somebody else like that who do the translation services to come out and actually do that for us. I was actually very impressed with the way they started the meeting tonight, just showed that it can be done. I think that because we are in a virtual environment, that we could probably proceed with that cost right now by using some CARES Act funding we have. So my next motion is from here on out, all of our council meetings and planning commission meetings and study sessions all have translation services. One of the things that I'm also concerned about is we have members in the community who probably do not come forward to talk to the council because there's no way for them to communicate with us. And that's just a shame to think that we have a large portion of our community that cannot be heard. So my motion is translation services through the Zoom platform, through YouTube Live, whatever it is, it's going to work best. Be implemented immediately for all council meetings, study sessions, and planning commission meetings. I think those are all equally important to have that. Councilman Wadiola.
I'll say motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second for that. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurd.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frank, Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
That was eight to zero.
Thank you. You know, I'm very proud to be a part of the council that has started this. I think that this is a long time coming, it is overdue in Commerce City. And I'm glad to see that the eight of us, nine of us, and I know she would have voted for it as well, made this decision and decided to put this investment out there, make sure that members of our community can be heard as well as hear what's going on in their community. So thank you very much. I think this is huge for us. My last one is a much bigger ask, and it is very important. I watch a lot where people are upset about the condition of our city as far as the cleanliness. They're upset about, you know, maybe neighbor two doors down is dirty and, you know. At the same time, I watch a lot of residents who are upset about neighborhood services going out and doing their job that we've asked them to go do. Overall, I have always said that getting Commerce City clean needs to be a partnership effort between the residents, the businesses, and the city government of Commerce City. So my motion is to create a campaign that is basically a clean Commerce City campaign, or a keep Commerce City campaign. This campaign involves elements to include revitalizing our adopt the street program, which is basically dead, to work on our trash pickup events, using our partners out there in industry as well as residents, as well as city employees to go out there and beautify the city. Encourage residents to clean their property and provide assistance where necessary. You know, be that we bring us kids through, or we do something noted, help clean that up. Look at our vacant landowners and what we can do there. You know, we have light poles on Tower Road and Quebec and things like that that we can be hanging banners of from. And we can really try to improve the overall appearance of our city. This includes things such as you know, like I've said a lot, the the light poles, you know, I look at those and I look at the the just the tattered state. I'm sitting in Highway Two and and hundred and fourth today, waiting on the light and looked at the light pole there, and it looks like a car probably crashed into a while ago. And basically, the pieces of metal were put back around and, you know, and that that's it. And, you know, it it just doesn't look right. So I really would like to see us invest in a campaign where we all work together, residents, businesses, and community members, and and the city of Commerce City to clean up their own stuff. You know, there's, I've got a complaint about asphalt being stacked somewhere on our property and things like that, you know. So I really think that if we put our hearts and our minds together, we can actually make Commerce City look better and be a better place to live. So my motion is for the campaign to be developed, we can work through via working groups or whatever, however we want to get that done, some format. But again, some of the key things I think we can jump on immediately is like revitalizing our adopt the street program, getting some trash pickup events out there, partnering with Republic to get those done. And then, you know, getting some kind of marketing material done, would even think that having, you know, students, you know, name the campaign or whatever, something to get their involvement in it as well would be great. What they did with Eagles Nest Playground, I think, was great, so let's go down that avenue again. So that is my motion. And Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I would like to second that motion. And just a brief little second to the motion, if that could include notifying businesses as well in their effort, especially on Quebec, from Quebec fifty six going all the way down to fifty six to what is it, I believe, Highway Two? I think our businesses need to play a part in this role as well, so I'd like to second that motion as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and and that is why I mentioned residents, businesses, and the city government of Commerce City all coming together to make our city a more attractive place to live, work, and play. Is there any discussion on the item, Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I I really like the idea too, because it is a community, you know, goal, I think, for everybody, and how can we come together and do that? So, you know, I think you made some suggestions about ways we can go about doing this. I'd like to kind of highlight and support those of kind of, what is everybody's you know, kind of setting our goals or kind of setting our expectation? What's everybody's expectation of what that means? Because, you know, I'll tell you during my campaign, I had somebody uh, asked me to explain to them how I was gonna help Commerce City become the next Highlands Ranch. And quite honestly, I hate Highlands Ranch. Um, you know, sorry that, you know, someone from Highlands Ranch is watching, but that's not what I see our community as. And, a- and so, you know, setting, getting kind of a group together, a focus group together on, on defining what that is. Or kind of understanding why um, our community can have those things. Is the light poles because we don't have the appropriate follow-up process on a crash? Cause I, I, you know, I know the state has a process to get refunded from the, from the insurance agencies when someone hits a guard rail. Same type of thing, those costs are baked into, you know, kind of that response and what we have to do. And are we utilizing those funds appropriately when they come back in? Or is, you know, the paint issue on some of our streetlights because the um, ice slicer that we put down in the winter is causing that paint to deteriorate. So we know that that's a problem. And so how do we create a maintenance uh, solution behind that where we kind of either come back in the spring and spray the, you know, bottom ten feet of a light pole or put some type of protecting on the outside that will help prevent that from happening? I think there's some really good ideas in the community on how to, you know, solve some of these problems and what those expectations really are. But, but just as the mayor has pointed out several times, you know, what's the process? We can come back and kind of inspect what happens during plowing, you know? I don't expect our plow drivers to be perfect. A lot of what they're plowing is hidden under snow. So you just can't see some of the challenges that are right underneath your plow. And so, yeah, you might, you might knock some curb and gutter out of, um, you know, out of place every once in a while. But what kind of processes can we come back to clean that up? To kind of notate that and get like a, a task order written to repair that. I think that sets the stage, you know, part of the city government's role is, is having this type of high expectation. A- and, and getting and kind of educating for, um, you know, voluntary compliance is kind of what I think we're all looking for. And then, again, you know, partnering with our businesses to do Adopt the Highway. I think that's one of my favorite things that, that the mayor just talked about is because it does feel good to get out there with your community, even if it's just for a stretch of roadway and clean up and really make an impact at kind of a granular level, like a really um, small local level. And so I think a lot of people would be willing to participate in something like that. And I think it'd be great if we kind of get the ball rolling and sponsor that again, because I, I, I feel like there's a lot of people in our community looking to give back and this may be one way they're willing to do it.
Thank you. Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, one of the suggestions real quick is the NLC did it two years ago. We love our city. And they had a criteria and uh, the different cities did it. And one of them was clean up our city. Why do you love your city? I would definitely love to be a part of something like that. I went to the workshops and saw the, the outcome of what you're talking about, Mayor. On, on why someone loves their city and that means going down and painting those light poles, working with the local high schools. So um, I'm just throwing uh, my service out there. Um, I have, took great notes and I think that the campaign should encompass all of that, um, of what you're doing. So Roger, just let me know, um, to give you examples of it. They made a cool video of it too.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Uh, Councilwoman Noble?
It's a wonderful idea. So I do fully support it, but I'd like to ask for just a point of clarification so that I can be better prepared for meetings in the future when it's a special meeting. Are we technically able to bring forward motions that are voted upon and then enacted by staff? When they haven't been agendized?
This council's special meeting agenda included an administrative council business item. So council could bring up these items, I believe. While the, the clerk's motion, the clerk's gonna have to figure out what the motions specifically were in each case for minutes purposes. And then as far as implementing them, um, obviously staff's gonna have to bring back items um, and identify funding for each. But yes, where we've identified administrative council business, it would be like any other council.
Okay, so this will be like a direction and then it will come back to us at a future date as well.
It, no, I, I believe the motions in each case are to advance these items. I just think by their nature, they're gonna require some further council action to implement. Um, this one in particular, um, council's likely gonna want to be involved with and staff's gonna have to identify the resources for, um, and staffing for it. Um, the others earlier discussed such as translation and during meetings and in social media, um, would be more likely to have immediate action. But again, specific resources are gonna have to be identified. So you will see those come into fruition at, at some point. But this one in particular, I think likely would have uh, further council action on, um, and input.
So we can use administrative council business to bring forward ideas for hopefully motions that are passed?
Yes, absolutely. If a council member wants to have an ordinance prepared for another meeting, um, or to implement an idea. Sometimes things are, a motion is made to implement on a particular night and then it doesn't, um, you know, when you look at it further and discuss it, it's, it's, it takes more work. But that, that's what admin council business can be used for. Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And um, I think uh, the idea of celebrating our uniqueness. And I hope that it's something that we can come up with and put together long before the comprehensive plan. I suspect the com- comprehensive plan process um, helps people answer some of these questions. But I don't want us to have to wait two years. So I hope this can be something that could be implemented quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I don't see this last motion as being a fire and forget where we just give it staff and we let it go. I see this as something that we can all be involved in and we can make it so that it is a successful program and that we have buy-in and we're out there championing it in our community to make sure that we get this where we want it to be. Um, the ultimate goal, just like Councilman Wadiola said, you know, I love my city and, and I do love my city. I just want to see my city look better and I want to see my city not have the reputation that it does. And I think that we are taking steps as a council to get us in that direction. And this is one of those steps that needs to be taken. And so I greatly appreciate all the comments on that. Barring any other requests to speak, then a motion in a second for the clean Commerce City campaign or however it is going to be called to be formulated and we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hertz?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frank, Mayor Hughesman?
Thank you. And uh, thank you, council, for the support on those three items. Um, I really do think that that's gonna help us to, to move the city in the, in the right direction and hope to be more inclusive of a lot of our residents. And uh, you know, it seems to be a recurring theme that we're talking about inclusivity. And uh, just look forward to moving these things down the road. Next on the agenda, is there any other administrative council business before we move on?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have four more items. Sorry about that.
Okay.
One is on the twenty-first. On the twenty-first, we're bumping up against the uh, four and a half hour uh, time limit. And so I, I would propose, uh, actually there's two items that uh, are council initiated. One would be the presentation regarding uh, hybrid city council meetings. The other is uh, a presentation regarding diversity and inclusion commission. One of those is a half hour, the other one is forty-five minutes. Would be with you to move one of those back to uh, October, what's our next meeting, October five?
I don't have an issue with moving the hybrid council meeting back. I think that we are all probably can probably resign to the fact that we are gonna continue with Zoom meetings for the foreseeable future. As long as the, the case work, the cases go the way they are. So that'd be instead, especially if we invest in the money for translation services and that's the way we can get that forward. Um, I think that moving that uh, presentation back is a smart way to go. If anybody disagrees with me, by all means, please raise your hand so that your voice can be heard. Seeing no requests, does that work for you?
Mayor, may I ask a, a question of the city manager? We had talked about that. On the hybrid council meetings, is staff waiting for direction on the use of CARES Act funds? To implement any of those solutions because we are getting closer than to a deadline in December to expend money. Um, and then just to also note that on September twenty-first, we will have an ordinance amending the, um, it's an emergency ordinance. Amending the remote meetings, um, to alleviate some of the struggles we have, especially with votings and then for boards and commissions. So we can do that. And actually, boards and commissions can, can or I'm sorry, you could start meeting under a hybrid capacity, um, under the current ordinance as is. But I think uh, staff was looking for direction possibly on spending money. So you may just uh, wanna consider that item as well. And I have two items on the night of the twenty-first that, that also can move if we start running up against time.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Noah, Councilwoman Noble?
Well, so um, I would sure like an update on the rent and mortgage program. And uh, how that's going, how many people have utilized it? I think that's particularly important, uh, as we discuss these issues regarding uh, translation and inclusivity and who might be left out of this, who may not know that it even exists. That's a concern to me. So I'd like to know how many applicants there have been and how much money has been expended. And um, if we could learn again, I think it was ten percent is maker taking uh, ten percent of whatever is uh, provided. Was that their fee?
Yes, the admin fee, administrative fee is ten percent, yes. So are you wanting that on the twenty-first as well?
Well, at least an update, but I'm really quite concerned that um, there is not a great way of reaching people who are going to be in need, especially since you know, the unemployment support disappeared as well. I just, I'm concerned. I want to know where they're coming from. We also had that same question regarding uh, the twenty nineteen survey. And it was a demograph, demographic breakdown of who answered the questions. So what, can we know where they came from? What parts of Commerce City did they come from? Et cetera.
I'm sorry, my, my internet is glitching here. I'm having a really terrible time hearing people. So was that yes on the twenty-first or October five?
I, I would personally like to know as soon as possible about the rent and mortgage assistance.
We have room to put that in the September fourteenth study session.
That's even better.
All right. Then um, my next question, on September twenty-nine, we would normally be scheduled to meet with the twenty-seven J school board. Do you, you want to do that? Do you want us to move ahead with scheduling that?
Uh, yes, I think that would be great to see how their school year started off. We've had a nice briefing from the Adams fourteen school board and district this evening. And uh, I look forward to hearing how things are going with uh, twenty-seven J since they will have been in school for a month at that point in time.
Okay, we will proceed with that. Thank you.
Open it up. Does anybody disagree with that? Okay. And did you hear my comment regarding, can we get an update on the rent and mortgage assistance on the fourteenth during study session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We will plan that. And then on the uh, twenty-eighth, uh, are you willing to start at three o'clock for the budget retreat? Or do you want a later start time?
We'll open that up. Does anybody, the twenty eighth, uh, anybody comments on that? Can you start at three o'clock or do you want to wait until later? It is a Monday evening. Um, Councilman Wadiola?
I can't start at three. I have to start at four.
Okay. Councilman Hertz?
Yeah, four probably works better for me as well. I also want to make sure that if it's televised or, or recorded that folks, um, I guess if it's recorded, it doesn't really matter, but I want people to be able to watch it as well. And three o'clock is pushing it for uh, people who have a day job.
Good point. Councilwoman Alan Thomas?
Yes, I agree. Um, four o'clock works great for me as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I haven't made until four that day as well, so.
Four o'clock? Good for everybody else? Okay, thank you. Four o'clock, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Final question, as we plan that infographics uh, information. We plan to, not this month, but the following month, include the capital projects we report in that. So quick question on capital projects, are we giving you what you want? Or do you want us to drop some projects, add some projects or is the list okay as it is right now?
Any feedback on that? Let's go ahead and chime in if you have feedback for Mr. Tinkelmanberg on that.
I, to be honest, I don't think it completely came clear what capital projects you had in mind for the coming budget year. Unless it was a limited amount at the end, one road re-completion. Is that what you're talking about?
Um, no, I was talking about the uh, monthly report that we give you.
Oh, okay. I really wasn't clear. Blame it on my ragweed allergy, would you? I've been taking pills and that's why I'm coughing and sneezing. Okay, I wasn't clear. No, that's good. Thank you.
Okay.
Doesn't look like anybody has any uh, request for adjustment on that. So I would say proceed the way you have been, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Hurst, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, it's just a quick um, question to, to Mr. Sheasley. You talked about a quick change in the way we're doing virtual meetings. Um, and I know you and I have had a very brief discussion on this, but are we going to be transitioning? Since we're still on virtual and just maybe on virtual for the time being, are we gonna transition to a more productive uh, voting? Opportunity? I, I don't know what you're.
First off, I believe all of your voting is productive.
Yeah, okay.
But, but second, yes, the idea is the charter mandates roll call votes uh, for certain items. So you'd have to continue to do those, but we're gonna allow for council basically to decide an alternate way of, of voting. And it's just written in the ordinance that way. The other change will be the requirement to record meetings. We're recommending not recording every meeting like certain boards and commissions meetings and possibly even study sessions. That'll be up for council to decide. There's a barrier to boards and commissions doing recording. They may not wish to be recorded and they're minors at times. And so we don't, we want to make some flexibility that we didn't anticipate back in, in March when we wrote that ordinance in a, in a real quick hurry.
And, and the only reason I bring that up is because, you know, we've all been on probably multiple different types of uh, platforms. But uh, on the E four seventy board, we do vote using uh, touchscreen, you know, yes or no. And then it shows everybody's results. I, I was just hoping that that, if that option's available to us, that that would kind of check that box in terms of roll call votes. And instead of, you know, going, Dylan going through and reading everybody's name, you know, fifteen to twenty times a night. That could be a very quick way for us to tally the votes and still be able to share who voted which one. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, seeing no other administrative council business, last item on our agenda is an executive session. I'm looking for a motion in a second to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two. Parentheses for parentheses E, for the purpose of determining positions, developing negotiating strategy and instruct- Parentheses for parentheses E, for the purpose of determining positions, developing negotiating strategy and instructing negotiators. Relative to an air monitoring program. Councilwoman Alan Thomas.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Councilman Hurst. Thank you. Have a motion in a second to go into executive session for that reason. Is there any discussion? And we will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Member Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank? Mayor Hughesman?
Yes. Thank you. So we will go into executive session and then I will come back and adjourn the meeting after that. Because most people probably will not be around to watch the end. I do wanna take a moment now. And thank Mr. Smith for his years of service to Commerce City. You are an asset that will truly be missed and wish you good luck in your new position and Godspeed moving forward. With that being said. You're welcome. I'm sure that you will still be around for a little bit for a couple of other meetings, so. All council members will be able to say that, but I just wanted to throw that out there today on the news of your recent job acceptance, so. I know you'll do good things as, as a city manager and look forward to reading about that success.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't see the executive session Zoom thing.
I believe that Mr. Sheasley is probably going to send that to us in the next minute or two so that we can all get in there. So, and then I will come back to the meeting and adjourn our meeting whenever we're done, so. Take a couple of minutes and use your restroom, get something to drink, and we'll see you in a couple of minutes in the executive session.
Okay, we're all back from executive session, returning to administrative council business. Does anybody have a motion? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion that we direct staff to explore an air monitoring system for Commerce City, researching different technologies and companies that can provide that, and coming back to us with a presentation and options for such technology. Councilwoman Noble.
Um, I'd like to second it, but with an amendment, which is that the that the companies present their systems to us, make presentations on their systems so that we can hear what they can accomplish and if they meet our needs.
Yep, I'm fine with that amendment that companies can come back and present to us. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, I would just request that also it included water monitoring, air and water monitoring.
My apologies, I skipped that one over. Let me amend my motion to go out and research air and water monitoring systems, technology and companies, and come back to us with those companies to provide a presentation for us so that we can decide if this is something that's viable for Commerce City. Councilwoman Noble, do you accept that amendment? Thank you. Any other discussion, Councilman Hurst?
Apologize, had my hand up to second that.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Grimes?
Uh, just would like to ask if council would support including CDPHG's technology in that discussion so that we have a clear apples to apples across the board, both, you know, government technology as well as private industry technology available.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an issue, and also don't think that it would make an impact on this motion. So I'm sure that that information can be included during the presentation. Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Frank, Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. One last, any alibis for administrative business? Anybody have anything else you want to bring up since we returned to that on the agenda?
Quick question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there a particular timeline whereby you want that?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer for that. Anybody out there think of a good timeline to ask for that, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
I think part of-
I would like it as soon as possible within the next one to two months.
Good answer. Anybody else have any input on that?
I'd like to know when CDPHG is beginning their air quality monitoring in Commerce City, as was presented to us at the study session last week. That might factor into it as well, but at a maximum, I think of sixty days.
All right, yeah, one to two months, sixty days. Anybody have a differing opinion? Seeing none, looks like if we can have it before November first, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, one last alibi. Anybody have any administrative council business they wish to bring up? Councilwoman Ellen Thomas? I think that was a residual hand raised, so great. Thank you all for this special meeting. Have a good evening, have a good rest of your week. Enjoy your Labor Day weekend. No meeting next Monday, so enjoy the time off. And I will be out of town starting Thursday evening until Monday afternoon, so in my absence, Mayor Procham will be the mayor. If she is not available, then I'll reach out to one of you to designate one of you as the mayor. But as it stands right now, from Thursday afternoon until Monday afternoon, I will not be around. So have a good week, enjoy your Labor Day holiday, hope it's fruitful for everybody. And again, I thank everybody for your votes tonight, especially on the translation services and on bilingual publications. Really, it's a, it's a great thing that this council voted to do that. And I'm proud to be a part of the council that actually put that into place. So thank you all for the support on that, and look forward to getting our city cleaned up as well. So thank you all. Have a good evening to the residents, have a good evening, have a good week, enjoy your Labor Day weekend. Thank you. We are adjourned.